...that we just finished, in order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it's necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on October 6, 2016, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Moved by Ms. Hines, seconded by Mrs. Corbett Sanders. All those in favor? That's unanimous with a few Board members away from the table. All right, so we have certified the closed meeting and we go to our work session. We have one item on the work session for tonight, which is to discuss and hopefully approve a request for proposal for the -- to search for a search firm to conduct the superintendent search for the Board. If you go to the documents, we have several documents posted. One is the request for proposals from the last time we did this search in July 2012, as well as the weighted score sheet, and also a proposed timeline for the -- for choosing -- this is just for choosing the superintendent search firm that we're talking about. So if people would call up the request for proposals, the 2012 request for proposals, hopefully everyone's had an opportunity to look at this. Yes, that would be -- that's attachment A. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to look at that and serve as something of a model. Although, Ms. Quinn, would you like to explain why we need to add in the weights? We also have separately posted the weights from the last time for how we would judge the proposals that come in.
Sure. I have with us today, we have Roger Paul, who's the procurement director, and we also have Michelle Pratt, who is the coordinator of procurement services, who will be your liaison within the procurement office for this RFP process.
Welcome.
So I'm actually gonna turn it over to our experts to provide you with that response.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a change -- a change has been made in the Fairfax County Purchasing Resolution, which is based on the Virginia Public Procurement Act, which actually requires the weighted criteria to be included in the RFP document. And that change occurred in July of 2014. So all RFPs that we issue since that time have had to have the weights included. And obviously, the previous RFP was before that, so we didn't include them.
Excellent. So I am just going to open this up for discussion. I believe, Ms. Quinn or Ms. Pratt, the critical pieces that we want to look at here are on page two primarily. Could you tell us a little bit about that, about what we should be focused on today?
So today, I think what we want to accomplish is finalizing the wording within the RFP, which kind of talks about the task or the scope of the work. So it's mainly on page two of the RFP, so we need some agreement from the Board to say these are the tasks that you want the search firm to perform. So once that's finalized, to your point earlier, Ms. Evans, we need to also identify the criteria weights. And then the last item we need to do is whether or not the Board would like us to issue the RFP to an open market, making this open to all vendors out there, or target it to at least four vendors. So those are the three items that we need to have some direction from the Board.
All right. Excellent. So I will open the conversation to Board members. I think what we might want to do is consider the RFP that we have in front of us, our basic framework, and consider amending that in any way that we feel, obviously, the dates will be different, but other than that, if there are either questions about the RFP or suggestions for modification from what we put out the last time. Mrs. Schultz.
So do you want to have the discussion now about whether we want to go to open market?
We could have that discussion if you'd like. I mean, that's one of the --
Yeah. My preference is because, and I've seen the change just in the time that I've been on the Board in over five years going to NSBA, that the universe of vendors changes. You know, some of them shut up shop, some of them are acquired by others. We may not know the market that's out there right now, and my preference would be, and certainly the kind of caliber that we're looking for, that we don't know what we don't know. And I think we would be doing ourselves and the Division of the Service if we selected the parties. I'd rather put it out to open market.
So I'm gonna see that as a motion, Mrs. Schultz.
Okay. It's a motion.
Okay. And it's -- and Mrs. Corbett Sanders has seconded, so go ahead and speak to your second.
This is perhaps one of the most important decisions that we will have, because how we seek out the support for identifying the best superintendent to follow in the footsteps of Dr. Garza will determine whether or not we have the best available talent. And so I feel very strongly that we owe it to the system and to our constituents that we cast the net widely and take the time to identify the best possible match for identifying candidates for the new superintendent.
Thank you. Do I have -- Mrs. Huff, I think I saw your hand. Mrs. Schultz -- or, I'm sorry, Mrs. Strauss.
I believe the last time, we also did a wide search, and I certainly recognize my colleagues who would like to do a wide search. I'm fine with that. We will be obviously looking for the strongest search firm, and it's my back of the envelope. There will probably be just a handful of people that are actually large enough to be able to accomplish this, but I know many of my colleagues would like to make sure that they have an opportunity to see what the entire field looks like. And so certainly, I would agree that if that is their wish, that's fine.
Mr. McAvine.
I would agree with Janie. I don't think it's going to make a difference in the -- and of all this, I think we're gonna come down to the same number of firms, but just to reassure the public that we've looked at everything that's out there, I think it's fine opening this up.
All right. Well, if there are no other comments, perhaps we can just have a vote on this and see -- so Mrs. Schultz's motion is to go to an open market as opposed to targeted. Can I see a show of hands of how many people support going to an open market? And that is unanimous. All right. So we've made one decision. Excellent. So now we go to the issue of the language. Did people -- I guess I'll just see if anybody had any particular questions on the RFP or on the RFP process, the timeline, just anything in particular, if anyone had changes. Are we happy with the language that's in the RFP as it is now, or did anyone have suggestions for amending it? Mrs. Corbett Sanders.
I would just limit the number of under Section 34, 34.1, news release by vendors. I would like to extend -- expand that section to be news release and conversations with the press by vendors. And my reasoning on this is that in the execution of this contract, the spokesperson about what the school system is doing should be someone from the school system or the school Board and not a outside vendor.
So what page are you on? You're on page --
I believe it's page 13.
Okay. So let's turn to page 13. If we could put that -- do we have the ability to put that up on the screen? Page 13. All right. Oh, I see. So it's news release by vendors, 34.1. So you would add the language, conversations with the press?
Right. Any discussions with the press during the course of this contracting.
Okay. Is there a second for that motion? Ms. Hines is seconding it. Is there any discussion of that? Mrs. Strauss.
I would just like to ask Ms. Quinn about, does this make any difference, any qualitative difference in how we go forward with this? No? Okay. You're fine with that? Thank you.
Okay. I see no further discussion on that. Could I have a show of hands of how many people would support adding that language in? And that is unanimous as well. All right. So we will -- Mrs. Quinn, are you gonna be taking -- okay. Excellent. Ms. McLaughlin.
You'd mentioned the proposed timeline, and I recall when we were having this discussion and trying to look at everybody's schedules, I had noted a couple of weeks ago that I'm going to be traveling, so I'm not here on the 27th. So how does that play a role?
Can we move it one week out?
Ms. Quinn, I think what we did in the past was, in fact, I know we did, any Board member who wanted to be on the SAC could be on the SAC. They had to be able to commit to being at all of the meetings.
That's correct.
So why did we then pick a date if Board members have things on their calendars that say they're not gonna be able to be there?
I believe the 27th was a hold date. That was a hold date for a work session.
Yeah, I understand it happens, but we also didn't expect we would find ourselves doing a superintendent search.
This timeline is a recommendation, so if the Board wishes to change the timeline for the SAC, we can do that. These dates are not set in stone. It's a recommendation of, you know, trying to expedite the process, what this could look like. And I think we had went through the Board calendar, and since this was a work session, with that, that could be something that could be accomplished.
Okay. Well, I -- that's why I'm bringing this up, because I did have this conversation when I was talking to Chairman Evans, and so I had thought we were gonna be trying to make sure that, if at all possible, that we would have the Board members there. So yes, it's a hold, but we have holds all the time, and when people plan personal travel, sometimes months in advance, then, you know, we find ourselves in a situation. But I don't consider this a standard work session. I consider this a very important part of the decision-making of this Board, so I would appreciate if we can look at another date instead of the 27th.
Did you have a proposed date?
In fairness to my other colleagues, I mean, I don't know if they've -- what their commitments are, so I frankly think in something like this, we should be finding out which Board members want to participate in it, and then we should be looking at their calendars because it's the 12 of us that matter. Staff will have to work around it, but this is one of the most important things we're doing. So that would be my advocacy, Ms. Evans, is that we find out which of the 12 want to participate in this, and then we figure out the date from there.
So, Ms. Quinn, do we need to adopt a timeline, or this was just a sample? So we don't need to act on that tonight?
Correct. You could do that at your first SAC meeting if October 20th is agreeable. But I guess we should probably identify those dates so that we can identify the SAC members. But you can set the schedule once you have your first meeting.
Okay. So perhaps that's a decision point today to see, because in the timeline here, the first was going to be on October 20th. Did anyone have any objection to October 20th being the first SAC date? So I'm not seeing anyone object to that. So perhaps the way we could -- Mrs. Corbett Sanders.
Can I offer a suggestion that would be that you could actually have a mini SAC meeting, a shorter one, prior to the 20th of October, where those people that have expressed an interest in being part of the SAC could then establish the timeline?
A timeline.
That would work.
Mm-hmm.
And that way, we can move from there.
So that -- and then with the assumption that October 20th would be the first SAC, but we would have a meeting of whoever would like to participate ahead of time to set a timeline, other than October 20th? Is that what you're suggesting? Okay. Any thoughts on that from other Board members? Ms. Darren Kowex.
I had the same idea, but since we had the 20th on there, I was gonna consider the 20th to be that type of meeting, where we sit down and do that agenda, because we're already, you know, two weeks out, and my calendar's pretty full. So that I looked, you know, this is me, just, I have opening on the 20th, and I had looked at that, and I do think that on the 20th, if that's the time we can decide, I think if all Board members can make it, or all Board members who want to, and then I think at that time when we set the dates, then we can decide if we want that same rule, you have to be there at all meetings. Because I don't know if that's gonna be possible for everyone, and I don't want the group to be so limited because calendars are so full. So I think that I agree with what Ms. Corbett Sanders was saying in essence, but I would see, I would prefer if that was what was gonna be discussed on the 20th.
Okay. Mrs. Huff.
So I agree with that. My only concern is, is the closer we get to the October 20th date, the harder it's gonna be to find a date that we all have open, because mine fill as I go, as they're open.
Right.
So I think I'd advocate that we would try and find the next date prior to October 20th is --
Okay. So you're supporting what Mrs. Corbett Sanders said, that to have just a smaller meeting just of anybody who's interested in order to set a timeline beyond October 20th?
Right. Or, I mean, I don't even know if we have to have a meeting. I feel like we could probably have REAs look at our calendars, anyone who's interested, and find a date that's open.
Well, here's an idea, too, that I think perhaps combines the two. If we had our -- if we ask who was interested in being on the SAC, and then simply have our EAAs put together a proposed timeline based on the availability of all of those Board members, bring it to October 20th, and we could discuss the proposed timeline based on that. I'm seeing some head nods. Could I get some hands in the air? Okay. So that's what we will do. We will set October 20th as the first meeting, and between now and then, we will see who was interested in being on the SAC, and we will have our staff put together a proposed timeline. It won't be a final one. We'll meet on October 20th and then finalize the timeline for the meetings.
Why not just have an expression if you want to be on the SAC?
Well, people maybe need to think about it? Yeah. So I do have some other -- okay. Mr. Wilson, you've been waiting patiently. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of questions regarding the contract that -- or the RFP that we've got in front of us. And maybe Ms. Quinn can answer the question. Does the -- how is the issue of contract termination dealt with in the RFP? Is there a requirement that it's terminable at the will of the Board?
We have kind of three options. One is termination for convenience, termination for cause, or termination for non-appropriation. So all of those are provided for in all of our contracts.
So how would -- can you just -- let's say we get into the process of using a search firm, and we're not satisfied with what they're -- how they're operating. Would we have to go back and look to establish cause to terminate the relationship?
Yeah. Hopefully, before we got to that point, we would have had some performance, vendor performance letters and/or conversations, but yeah, that's how we would --
So I guess my view of this is that if we could tighten it up to allow us much more leeway to just if we -- if the will of the Board is to terminate the search firm, then we can terminate. I would rather not have to be in a situation where we have to show cause.
Yes. Actually, in the contract, it's very -- I mean, you've got that leeway to terminate for convenience. So that's -- that is an option that you have. You can terminate at any time.
Is there any penalty associated with that, or payments that we --
Oh, yeah. I mean, if there's outstanding work that they've done, they've brought certain deliverables to the table, and you'll have to pay for those. But any unfinished business, no. You're not obligated.
Right. So in this context, since we're searching for a particular person, that's the deliverable. So in that case, I guess we would just have to pay whatever expenses have been incurred up to that date?
Right. Exactly.
Okay. Where is this addressed in the RFP?
Page 19.
What paragraph are we looking at?
Starts on 31. It's under Contract Provisions. 31 is termination of contracts, and 32 is termination for convenience. And on the following page, 20, is termination of contract for cause.
Okay. I mean, I don't know that I could read them just now to be comfortable, but that's -- I think you understand my concern on this point. I think we need as much latitude as possible, unless it's required that we maintain restrictions on our ability. I think in this context, with a very personal service like this, we need to be able to terminate. The second question I had is, in the pricing provisions, it talks about a fixed-price contract, and my understanding is that this is what was used previously. In my experience with search firms, oftentimes, search firms don't have fixed prices. Their payment is based on deliverable of the person that's being sought, and then it's based on the compensation. There's a formula, and so it's not a fixed price. I don't want to eliminate potentially qualified bidders by limiting how they're gonna be compensated, essentially.
So this is completely negotiable and probably dependent on the proposals that we receive. My recollection is, previously, we did receive fixed-price proposals plus reimbursement for expenses, but we certainly have latitude here to either negotiate and/or modify.
Yeah. So I guess I would be comfortable with language that allows it to be more of industry-standard compensation, payment, pricing structure, so that we do pull in, you know, all of the best potential providers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Wilson, did you have any specific proposed amendments, or you --
Yeah, I guess that would be the amendment, would be to both of those topics, to amend the RFP, to broaden our right to terminate for convenience, and to eliminate any possibility that we'd have to show cause, and to broaden the pricing to allow for what is common in the industry for payment to search firms.
I'm sorry, payment for?
For compensation, the pricing under the contract with the search firm to allow for it to be industry-standard, we always can -- we're gonna have a negotiation with that party.
I see.
But I don't want to limit it in the RFP if they read a fixed price, say, well, we don't do fixed price.
I see. Okay. Well, let's take those one at a time. Is there a second for broadening the RFP to -- on termination for convenience? Mrs. Schultz is seconding that. Do we have a discussion of that, or do we want to simply?
I'll just briefly. You know, also in this industry, you know, a vendor could substantially do harm to us if they're not performing, and we've gotta have the ability to let them go, and we've gotta have some recompense. I mean, we need a partner in this, and I think it signals in the contract language, look, if you're gonna come and do this. And having been a part of the last superintendent's search, there were some that I felt that came to the table prepared to be partners, and some that it was a pie in the sky reach. And I think it just, it adds a level of, Kathy Smith, if you're out there, gravitas, just did that for her, that I think it's important to convey.
So is there any more discussion? If we suggest this, would that give you the guidance you need to add language? Okay, Ms. Hines.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I've been trying to follow this, but now I'm looking back through the document for where this would be and what it would say. Can somebody tell me what page we're on?
It's page 19, where it starts. It's Section 32 on page 19, termination for convenience.
Okay. So this is page 19, so that is in the County of Fairfax Commonwealth of Virginia, general conditions and instructions to bidders, yes? Is that in the -- okay. Do we change that? Is that boilerplate from the county that we can change?
I believe the language that's currently written for the termination of convenience will accomplish what we're discussing.
We have to give five days' notice in our current RFP, but we can terminate at any
time for the best interest of the county.
So Item 32 on page 19.
Correct.
Termination for convenience. A contract may be terminated in whole or in part by the county in accordance with this clause, whenever the county purchasing agent shall determine that such a termination is in the best interest of the county. Any such termination shall be affected by delivery to the contractor at least five working days prior to the termination date of a notice of termination specifying the extent to which performance shall be terminated and the date upon which termination becomes effective. An equitable adjustment in the contract price shall be made for completed service, but no amount shall be allowed for anticipated profit on unperformed services. I think that covers what you're looking for. Mr. Wilson, am I wrong?
Yeah, I think you are, because I think that what that leaves open is, in a fixed-price contract, if you have partial performance, we'd be owing part of the price. So I think that in this case, this is a payment on the deliverable, which is our new superintendent. And so I think that actually, now that you've read it, raises more concerns for me, that this actually implies that if we exercise the right to terminate, they have a look back and say, well, we've been working on this for two months, so you owe us, we thought we could do it in three, so you owe us 75% of the fee.
So you would rather it said what?
Well, I don't think I want to get into contract drafting at the table, although I probably could. I think that we can leave that up to Ms. Quinn. I think she understands. I just want to make sure that in the event we exercise the right to terminate for any cause or no cause whatsoever, that, you know, we'll compensate them for expenses, but we're not gonna compensate them a portion of a fee.
So --
And I'm not sure whether this language actually accomplishes it or not, because as a Board member, I've been reading it and --
I guess my question is, if we put something in here that makes potential partners, potential people who are gonna bid for this contract, makes them worry that if they got the contract and we decided to just kick them to the curb for whatever reason we have, that they would walk away with nothing, even though they might have spent weeks working on this? And I'm not -- that does not, to me, that, I don't know, but that doesn't sound like an industry standard that makes sense. Am I wrong? I mean, I think they have a right to expect to be compensated for their expenses.
That's correct. And the payment schedule will be part of the negotiation. Sometimes the vendors will provide where they want the payment tied to what deliverable. And if the Board wishes that final payment be that it's after the superintendent has been hired, that's something that we can negotiate as we negotiate the contract.
So what I hear you saying, Ms. Quinn, is that in our -- what we negotiate in terms of payment terms?
Correct.
Will allow us to know if and when we terminate, what we owe, and it will allow the contract --
And what we had agreed to at the time that we signed the contract.
Right. So there won't be any confusion about what we owe when we terminate.
Correct.
And I think this is, this RFP doesn't become the contract, right? There's a separate contract that we're gonna negotiate. It is just a matter of what you're saying. We don't want to deter quality contractors from not applying due to what's in here. And I think that using language that conforms to whatever the industry standard is for professional search firms is what we need to provide in this contract.
Well, I'm perfectly happy to do whatever the industry standard is. I'm assuming that's what this is. This, what we have here is the industry standard? And it's the one we've used before?
Correct. And just to be clear, the RFP does become part of the final contract. Correct. And just to be clear, the RFP does become part of the final contract. So the final contract consists of any items we negotiate and in memorandum of negotiations, the RFP document and each or the offerer's, successful offerer's technical and cost proposal. So any modification to pricing or payment that we make through negotiations would be documented in the memorandum of negotiation document.
Does that provide for your concern, Mr. Wilson, that this would be part of the negotiation or no?
To the extent I understand it, yes, but I think, you know, the incorporation of a, how many pages is this RFP?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six-page RFP into another contract, that's obviously complicated interaction of clauses. So I'm going to have to defer to our contracting officers to tell me that that's going to work out. But I think they understand my point and it doesn't sound like necessarily we need to make an amendment to it. To the extent they think they need to, then I would just defer to them, but I think that's the point I wanted to make.
Okay. With that understanding, then we'll move on, except you had a second suggestion?
And the second was just the pricing. And in that case, I think the pricing language in the RFP does sort of fix it as a fixed price contract. And I want to, I guess, in my experience with professional providers of search services, it isn't always a fixed fee. And I just want to make sure we're not excluding a portion of talented search firms out there from applying by saying that in this case, it will be a fixed fee.
Is that an issue? Do we need to broaden that? Or if somebody came in with something other than a fixed fee, would we be able to consider it?
We would. I think in the cost proposal instructions, we also ask for a breakdown of what the fees are, which could include things, a breakdown of those items to get to the total price. I don't know if that helps.
Yeah, so I mean, in this case, it does seem like we would want to change the language a little bit to say a fixed fee, you know, or not fixed fee. I mean, I think that I want to sweep in as many qualified, highly qualified firms as possible for us to review.
Okay, so let me get a sense of the board of whether they, the board would like to broaden it to clarify. I think it sounds like it's a clarification rather than a substantive change perhaps, to clarify that some other pricing structure other than a fixed fee would be acceptable to us. Can I see a show of hands of how many people could support that? Well, to Mr. Wilson's point, to clarify that something other than a fixed fee would be considered. Okay, all those opposed? Okay, so if, do you have enough direction to clarify? All right, very good. And I have Mrs. Corbett Sanders.
Thank you. Is this the time where we can actually look at the schedule, the weighting of how we'll evaluate?
Sure, because that's got to be part of the contract.
Because it will be part of the contract. Great.
Correct. The weighting has to be part of the contract, yes. So then that is attachment, that's attachment B?
Correct.
Okay.
And my question about it is that when we look at it, the way I've, it's fifty-five percent will go to, it'll be weighted fifty-five percent qualifications references and staffing plan. And then another five percent will be spread over those items and contribute to the scoping exercise, which the scoping exercise is forty percent. And that's what the actual plan is because the scoping exercise, which is contained in item, section five, section six, and the technical proposal, that's where the proposed contractors or the contractors will put forth how they plan on going about identifying the characteristics of the superintendent, how they plan on identifying the maximum number of quality applicants, screening of candidates, and assistance. How did you figure that fifty-five percent would be references in staffing plan and only forty percent for the actual proposed work? Just, I just started adding them up and I was just trying to figure out how we got to that breakout.
So this is what was used in the last search. So these are what the committee agreed to the last search. So these numbers are not mine or ours. They're the group's and we can modify them however you see fit.
Okay. My only concern is I don't know how the group and maybe some of the existing board members or previous board members can shed some light on this. But the concept that quals and references is more, is disproportionately higher than somebody who could be a new innovator, who may not, may have been around, may have had one or two searches under their belt and is taking a much more unique or aggressive way of getting there. They would not be able to compete for this contract because they don't have the number of references.
So you're asking?
I'm asking how we got to a fifty-five, sixty, forty split.
To take a stab at it.
Okay.
Okay. In doing, first of all, doing a search for the tenth largest school division in the nation, what you will find is that we will likely be looking for somebody who is not looking for a job and will be aggressively looking to hire someone in a situation where they are loved, when they're doing an outstanding job. So that one of the things in looking for a search firm is you are looking for people who have a deep and personal connection to the brightest and the best in the country, possibly worldwide. So that it becomes sometimes a personal look at how far and how deep are their connections. Because a clever situation may look good on paper, but you're going to look to see who do they know, who can they talk into coming here? And so that sometimes those very broad and deep personal connections are what bring you what you really want. And it isn't necessarily going to show up in some of these other categories and that's the challenge. So often, who staffs it, what their backgrounds are, what are the, what are the sizes of the searches that they have been, that they have done, and how successful were they in getting people to come to a large school division? Did you have a suggestion, Mrs. Corbett Sanders, for a change in weighting that you wanted to consider?
I just think that the effectively sixty, forty split is a little bit weighted too heavily. I would be open to hearing from my colleagues where they think there might be changes to it. Because the reality is those deep connections and experiences are going to come out in how they address the language about the characteristics of a superintendent, how you get to the characteristics, what is the, how they identify the maximum number of qualified applicants, the screening of candidates, and the assistance, the description of how they will actually assist the board. And so although I agree with you that having that network is critical, I'm not sure that a breakout of what effectively becomes a sixty, forty split is the right balance in that. And that's, so, you know, even if it were fifty, fifty, I think that that's a little bit more balanced. But typically, and my experience in contracting obviously comes from the technical side of the world. I haven't done a whole lot of executive search. But I guess my question is, how does this compare to other executive search placements?
Mr. Nick Copax?
Just trying to address what, Ms. Corbett Sanders, and I don't have an answer to your last question, how does it? But I do think there are times where we do have to look to our, each other and our colleagues who've been through this. Ms. Strauss has been through this many times. I've only been through it once. But I can say everything that she's saying is correct. And, you know, you, and we did the open search, the extensive search, we did everything. And in the end, we found there were, there's very few firms out there. We can't make them up. It's different than the contracting world. It's different than some of the things you may have experienced. But so for me, I think this split is okay. I guess I would be interested to hear what you would entertain. I understand you're saying sixty, forty. If you want fifty, fifty, I don't know how you want to break that up. But the reality is what it is in this submarket, in this market. And, you know, we're going to be as open and transparent as possible, but it is what it is. The amount of firms that can conduct a nationwide search for us, they are what they are.
Ms. McLaughlin?
I appreciate what Ms. Copax was saying, but I also welcome the fact that we do have four new board members. And, you know, you are now part of this team that's going to have twelve to select a new superintendent. So we benefit from you all bringing your different skills and expertise in your own careers. So I'm not wed to these weightings if our colleagues, you know, look at it and say, you all made the best decision you could four years ago, but here's some additional input. And then I think as a board, we should, you know, consult with each other and with staff. And if we need to change some of the weightings here, then we should. And so if the timing is that this all has to be done tonight, then I would say we didn't really help ourselves because we should have then understood that there was going to be some very serious decisions being made, you know, and a lot of conversation with each other in advance of tonight to say, really study the weights on this thing because if we want to change it, it'll have to change tonight. So I guess my first clarifying question is from staff. These weights, as they're listed here from what we used four years ago, is it your expectation that we're going to leave tonight's work session and this is set in stone and we're going with it? Okay, well, then everybody, I think we need to be really mindful. You know, are these weights working for us? The second thing that ties into this is, so I'm reading number seven, reasonableness of cost proposal, where that also has twenty percent. And then you read the little box down at the bottom and it says, "To simplify the math during the technical review process, the total scores add to a hundred percent. Once the top technical proposals are identified, the business cost proposals will be evaluated and those two scores will be combined to total a hundred percent."
So, Ms. Quinn, did you want to explain how, the process? I understand the confusion because, well, it's a two-step. But I think Mrs. Quinn can explain what the first set of weightings is and then how the, and how the second one.
Yeah, because I'm trying to figure out how twenty percent equals the hundred percent when they're combined together.
Right. So if you could clarify on that.
So because the technical proposal is evaluated independent of the cost proposal. So you won't see the cost proposal until you get through the review of the technical proposal. So to, again, to simplify it, we just added it to a hundred percent, right? And then once you select your top technical proposals, then you'll receive the cost proposals to those firms. Then you evaluate the cost proposal. And when we talk about combining, then the technical proposal, when you combine it, becomes eighty percent of the total score and twenty percent comes from the cost proposal.
Okay. That might help anybody in the public who's also going to look at this document and say, how does one-twenty become a hundred percent? So I guess since staff is, you know, hearing this dialogue now as we're sort of, you know, studying these weights and the percentages and, you know, is this serving us well? And, you know, not wanting to put Ms. Corbett Sanders on the spot, I mean, you sort of noted it. And I still think that with your experience in the corporate sector, if you look at some of these weights and say, another option is to consider weighting it the following, we would benefit between your suggestions and staff saying, here's why this should stay this way. Or, well, you've brought up a really good perspective and sure, why not, you know, adjust the weighting on there? Because as a former college admissions officer, I mean, this matrix is very similar to what we do in college admissions. And depending on what you're going to emphasize is going to depend on what your outcome's going to be. So I kind of take it pretty seriously that I want to make sure our percentage weights, we've really put them in the right bucket, if that makes sense. I mean, each one of these criteria has a different weight. And if we need to change the weight in the various buckets, then.
Did you have a specific suggestion or?
Again, I mean, I just said, my background's in college admissions. I didn't do corporate contracts and procurement contracts. So I know that we talked about this four years ago. If we need a refresher from staff in saying, what you have before you that you did four years ago, it serves you best because of the following, that's great. What I don't want to hear is, well, you did it four years ago, so just keep doing it. Because we do a lot of really great things that we didn't use to do and we do it now. So if, in other words, if there's continuous improvement we can do with this, great. If you all as staff feel strongly that the weights are here, then maybe that will help all of us right now to say, let's not take up your time, our time, the public's time and just anoint this. But I feel like right now, this was a conversation from four years ago. Let's just understand the context of why this looks like this.
Mrs. Schultz?
So I feel like we're talking a little bit past each other on the going and evaluating the recommendations. We're not looking for the recommendations of the superintendent candidate. You're talking about the background and the qualifications of the vendor.
Correct. That's exactly right, Mrs. Schultz.
And the reason that becomes of paramount importance is, and why last time we put a heavy weight on that, is we actually spent time talking to and evaluating board members of previous clients of the vendors to talk specifically to those board members to figure out what their takeaway was in terms of the communication, the quality of services, et cetera. That, that's sort of the goal, you know, that's the jewel in the crown is once you start talking and deriving the quality of the vendor from the people that have recently benefited from that individual's services, then you can weight the quality of the services going forward. And a very parochial version is, you know, think, you know, if you were looking online for recommendations, you know, you would want to take your Amazon review, your Yelp review. You want to take it all in context and then make a decision. And all of those become very, very important when you're hanging your hat on making the decision of who you're going to select. And I think that was the impetus behind the weighting. Now, we can, you know, frankly, get into the weeds here and the machinations if we want to move any of these numbers around. At some point, you know, how much are you moving the needle? We, you know, we're not using an eight-year-old or twelve-year-old reference. Unfortunately, this is a relatively recent reference and two-thirds of the board were here for that. So I think it is a reasonable expectation if you want, if you have a reasonable modification to it. But I don't see any reason why that which we used and went through a fair degree of review on last time would not be a reasonable measuring stick going forward.
So you're advocating to keep the, keep it as it is. All right, I've got two go-bags. Mrs. Strauss?
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, I would, I would agree, again, to leave it. In the, in choosing a firm, we are also looking to make sure that the firm understands us as individual board members and the board as a whole. Because not only are they going to look for, obviously, an amazing person who works on water, they are also going to look for the person who will be the best choice for us. So it becomes a very personal relationship. And Mrs. Schultz is correct, we take a look at other clients a firm has, has worked for. Also, this firm will go out into the community and help understand what the community wants, and as a, as an interaction with their community, that's very, very important, because they are a part of this process, because it is also fit. So, and that was why the weights really were established the way they were. We took a long time talking about them, so I think we were well-served, and as we work our way through it, at least the last time, the last couple of times that I've done this, sort of the, the quality comes to the surface as to where we think we're going to have the absolute best personal fit for our board individually and as a, as a group. So I think these weights will help us get there.
Mrs. Corbett Sanders?
Thank you. I would actually like to make a suggestion so that we actually can relook at these weights in a manner which does not send an impression that if you are already part of our, you know, one of our contractors, then you may have extra waiting for it. It doesn't mean that that expertise from various contractors won't come to become relevant as they do the work and submit a proposal. So I would suggest that we actually change the technical proposal instructions weighting to increase it to 10%, because that's actually where the work plan will come from. And then decrease the qualifications of the firm from 30% to 25%, or you can change either the staffing plan or the references accordingly, so that it ends up being a 50-50 weighting, which shows that we take very seriously the approach that's going to be used, the technology that will be brought to bear, the deliberate planning on how they will interact with board members, with the community, how they will go through the requirements definition process. And so I would suggest taking into account how heavily, how important it is that whoever gets this contract does have a network of individuals that they can be reaching out into and trying to get, identify the best candidates, but that technical approach, the work plan, should have a bit more than 5%.
So your suggestion is change the technical from 5 to 10, qualifications of firm from 30 to 25, and leave everything else the same? All right, can I get a sense of the board of how many people would support procedural? Yes.
So one of the things I had suggested was, since we do benefit from staff who does a lot of this work, is, Ms. Corbett Sanders has a very thoughtful suggestion. I think before the board votes, it'd be helpful if staff says, you know, based on the work we do with this, we would have a concern for the following reason, or, you know, if that gives you all greater comfort and that kind of focus, we don't see any harm with it. I mean, I, I always feel a little uncomfortable voting on something when I don't have the context and information.
Do you have some insights into that?
Actually, that would work. That's, that weight distribution is plausible, and I think it'll, it'll achieve the result that we need it in, and that is getting a capable executive search firm, that'll work.
All right, Ms. Hines?
Thank you, that's helpful. I would just ask, since it's different from what you first proposed, if you could, not to put you on the spot, but it is different, and in what way does the difference make a difference from your perspective?
Well, I think that, based on the earlier discussion, the board mentioned that the technical proposal was a little bit more important, so if you want to increase that by 5%, if that's important to the board, then that's, that's, that's acceptable, that's fine. It depends on the goal of the board, what you want to achieve in terms of what you're looking for in executive search firms. So you can allocate these scores and mix it in different ways, but I, based on the, what has been proposed, that's plausible.
And you still believe that even if we cut down on the percentage related to the qualifications of the firm, which I think is the second part of this, right? Well, still, because it is important to me that we get a firm with, you know, a good track record. So are we losing anything there, you think, by doing that?
Are you losing 5% in the weight? No, you, no, I mean, you're still going to get, you know, highly qualified firm here. Because the folks, the firms are going to respond to this based on the magnitude of what, what, I mean, what we're looking for here in terms of a superintendent. You're going to get some, some major players here.
Okay, thank you. Because, you know, my concern is anybody can put together a really great-looking proposal, but I'm most interested in whether they've done it before and, you know, whether they've been successful. I think experience is very important to me, so thank you, that helped.
Brian, or Mr. McAvine, sorry?
You know, I really don't think changing 5% in any of these is going to make a major difference, we're going to get the same handful of firms. I'm happy to support Ms. Corbett Sanders if she, she feels that's, that's a better weighting, but I really think playing around the edges like this is not, not very productive.
Mrs. Schultz?
To some degree, I agree with Mr. McAvine. In the end, I don't think it's going to, but, but I do think it's incumbent upon thus, those of us who've been on the board before to maybe create some ownership, maybe with our new colleagues, so I don't have a problem moving it. The other thing I would say to staff is, we, we could always consider, somebody could submit a proposal, and let's say they fall without, outside the bounds, maybe they're, you know, a new entity that's been created, for example, out of other entities that, and so they may not have the track record. They could always submit in one area a non-responsive proposal and have that be a part of the negotiation, say, look, we understand that, you know, we may not qualify in this, and it can be, come a part of the negotiation of the board to take or not take that and undertake any measures. That's a part of the negotiation process. So we certainly could, and I guarantee you, we will have a, we're not buying widgets, okay? And there could be some contractual anomalies in the proposals that are submitted, and it will be up to the board the degree to which those anomalies benefit us or the process, and we could take it, could we not?
The, the technical review process allows for that conversation to take place at the first, at the second SAC meeting, since the first SAC meeting will be proposal distribution.
All right, with that, let me get a sense of the board of how many people can support the, the weightings as Mrs. Corbett Sanders has suggested. All in favor? One, two, three, okay, that's unanimous. So we're finished with the weightings, you know, that'll be our new weighting. Do we have any other suggestions for changes to the draft RFP? Do I have a motion to accept the RFP as Mrs. Hines, seconded by Mrs. Schultz, or Mrs. Strauss? Did you want to speak? Okay, did, okay. Could I see a show of hands of how many people will support the RFP as change? Excellent, that, Susan, yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, before you vote, we do recommend one change that we have to put in the RFP, and that is on the bottom of page two, and that is the start date for the superintendent, the new superintendent. So we're recommending that it's on or before July 1st, 2017. Just a technical change, but I wanted you all to know that we will be making that change into the RFP.
Oh, yes, of course, okay. All right, with that, shall we take a vote? All in favor of this, okay, that is unanimous, and so, thank you, I believe that, so we can get that out tomorrow, is that correct? Excellent, excellent work, everyone. So let's take, yes, Ms. McLaughlin?
Sorry, I don't know if that, this was discussed yet, but I know it's something I've had concerns, even when we post positions for principals. Did I, I wasn't studying the timeline on when we post the RFP and close it, and I know that can make a very big difference in terms of, do people feel they have enough time to actually fill, you know, prepare an application and submit for it? So I was too busy worried about not being part of the selection process. So what dates are we posting this RFP, RFP to be announced and then closed?
With the changes made tonight, our goal is to post the RFP tomorrow.
Okay, and then when are we planning to close it?
And then we're planning on closing it on October 19th.
And then we'll meet the next day for our first SAC meeting?
Correct.
Okay, I'm going to go with my colleagues' confidence that we're so special, that anyone who's interested in, you know, being a search firm for FCPS is already working on it, but it, I, I want to be on record, I, that concerns me a bit, that, that seems like an awfully tight timeline to prepare a strong, compelling RFP. So if you all can just answer that quickly, if that is a reasonable window?
This is a very aggressive timeline, but we were also trying to keep in mind how long it takes to actually go through the search process, and if we would like to have a new superintendent onboard by July 1st, we need to expedite the search firm RFP process. So our requirement is to have the RFP open for 10 days, that's our minimum requirement. So this meets that requirement, and then all the dates, like the October 20th, is based on the fact that this is going to close on October 19th. So if we extend the closing date, we have to move that first SAC meeting date as well.
No, I understand, but this is actually very helpful, having gone through the first one. How does this align with what we did four years ago? And because I know we were a little ahead of it, the RFP process was.
So this aligns, actually issuing and selecting the firm is very close to where we were in the last search with this. We had opened it for 30 days in the last RFP, but we also started the RFP process in July.
All right, and we do need to finish because we are about ready to start our regular meeting.
Well, I do understand that, Ms. Evans, but I just, I do think everybody needs to really understand, Ms. Quinn just said, when we did this RFP and we had all those proposals come in, we posted it for 30 days, and now we're posting it for 10. So people really need to be, and it's not even 10 business days, it's going to be 10 calendar days. So you guys, I mean, if, let's, let's just hope we see some good proposals come through, because I, I know from listening to contractors, at times, they have said to us, when you guys post something really fast, really quick, and it's a tight timeline, it signals that you already know who you want anyway, and you're just, you know, following procedure, and, and we might be discouraging, you know, good firms from considering this, because they're going to think we already know who we're going to use, based on our, our longstanding history, and that concerns me.
So the, board members should let our clerk know and their EAA's know if they would like to be on the SAC, and then we can go from there with that. And with that, this work session is adjourned, I'm going to take a five-minute break, and then...
Ms. Evans, I thought Ms. Quinn said, before you vote, you need to do blah, 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 and then she started talking about, so...
We already voted, we did an unanimous vote. All right, the work session is adjourned, we'll take a five-minute break and reconvene.